Okay, it is 6:30 PM on Thursday, September 12th, 2013. I'll call to order the work session for the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education. Mr. Kern, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Fevel?
Yes, here.
Mr. White?
Mr. White did contact me earlier today and noted that he is stuck in Toledo on business and he won't be joining us tonight. So with that, we can move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will accept the motion to approve the agenda as written.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, scene done, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fevel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, we have four work session items followed by an executive session. The first work session item is an update from John Labby from the American Heart Association. Mr. Labby, please come up.
Welcome back.
Thanks, I'm familiar with this.
Yeah.
They added a clicker this time for me though, so we'll see how that goes. First and foremost, I just want to thank the board for asking me to attend today in follow-up to an update I had recently with Mr. Rafe and Dr. Lucas. You know, I have to say, this is the first time in my 10 years at the American Heart Association, I've been asked to come to a board meeting. So I think it kind of speaks to the partnership that we have built over the last five years. And I wanted to spend some time tonight, I think that normally when we come here, we just share the most recent about what we've done. I wanted to spend a little time tonight going a little deeper for the board to help really paint the picture of the impact that we're having in the Olentangie Local Schools and quite honestly, through the greater community that makes up the Olentangie Local Schools. So that's my hope for tonight, and I also have left a couple of things for you as well.
You're making us hungry.
Yeah. Hopefully you caught a nice healthy snack before dinner. So for those up here wondering what Mrs. Fevel's referencing, I gave them one of the cookbooks that the Heart Association provides, and we actually provided those cookbooks as an incentive through your staff wellness program last year that we worked on with Jennifer Iseman. So there's that there, as well as a smaller brochure that highlights the many programs that we do at the American Heart Association. So with that, I sometimes, in a partnership like ours where we've been working together for so long, fail to go back and tell the story of cardiovascular disease and stroke, and why we feel it's so important to work in our communities to help us achieve our goal and our mission of building healthier lives free from heart disease and stroke. There's a lot of numbers out there that are associated with any chronic illness or disease. For us, the numbers that stick out are 34. That's the number of seconds that it take, every 34 seconds, somebody suffers a heart attack. The number 40, that's the amount of time, frequency, 40 seconds, that somebody suffers a stroke, which is our nation's leading cause of long-term disability. Another number is 36,000, and that's one that's very important to me in that 36,000 babies each year are born with congenital heart defects. A number that's not on there is 80, and that's the percentage of heart disease that is preventable, which for me was a shocker when I found that out just this last year and realizing the disparity between the amount that we're able to prevent and the amount that actually occurs. 298 billion is a big number with a B. That is the nation, the cost, the direct and indirect costs each year associated with cardiovascular disease. And that's where some of the things we'll talk about, about employee wellness in a minute, come into play. But the big number that's on there, or that is not on there, is 863. That is the number of lives that we will save per day in 2020 when we reach our goal to improve the health of all Americans by 20% and decrease death by 20%. Currently, about 256 people per day are dying from cardiovascular disease. So you know, rough estimates of a fourfold increase in improving health. So that's really why we do so many things at the Heart Association, to fund research, fund education programs. But where it comes into play for us in our partnership is folks like that little guy there. That's where we believe we can make a huge difference. We can do it in research, but really when you look at that 80% number that is preventable, by reteaching our youth, and frankly, by reteaching the adults that are around our youth when looking at a school setting, about the warning signs of heart disease and stroke and the things that they can do to live an active health of life, healthy life, we can achieve the 2020 goal of building healthier lives free from heart disease and stroke. When we look at our community as a whole, and thinking of Columbus, I mean, this graphic up there looks at the way that we look at building those healthier communities, and we look at what we're doing in the home, what we're educating our community about so they can take these things home and have an active family. What we're doing in the community, I think we're, I moved recently, about five years ago, from northeast Ohio, and was very encouraged that when we were home hunting, that there were neighborhoods with walking paths, and that there were so many things in the weekends that encouraged physical activity versus encouraging just the fun eating you do after you have all the physical activity. The workplace, I'll highlight a little bit of that in a minute, and then also obviously what we're doing with our schools as well. So in looking at our programs in our schools, this is our 35th anniversary of our service learning partnerships with schools that started with the Jump Rope and Hoops for Heart program, and it really grown to our Hoops for Heart program and targeting middle school students. And just over the last two years, Olentangie's been a leader in helping us institute our new high school redout program, which has been really, really exciting. And I have to say that as somebody who does not have a high schooler, and has sometimes can be around folks that just, you hear all the stories on TV, and having been at, working with your high schools these last two years, and then also being at these board meetings, hearing about presentations such as Rachel's Promise and some of the great things that are going on, we've been able to see really the amazing compassion and desire to help others that high school students have. And it's really helped paint a great program and create a great program for the American Heart Association, to be engaging those leaders of tomorrow and making a difference. But the Jump Rope and Hoops for Heart programs in Olentangie started about five years ago and really were the catalyst for building the partnership that we have today that includes all levels of buildings and staff that are working to build healthier lives through their fundraising efforts, but more importantly, through integrating into the culture of the school, through curriculum and physical education and language arts, social awareness with the student councils, and some great marketing and putting together presentations through the high school DECA programs, where last year, the Orange High School DECA group actually used their redout as one of their business projects to take to their state national convention. So it's pretty neat to see. The piece that we sat down last year with to look at really building, continuing to build on our program was, you know, for years and years, we have been really good at working with the students. And we've done a great job of working through your staff to make student activists, students activists for change, so when they go home, they can be that child that tells mom and dad and actually reteaches them not only in math, because we all know that parents do math homework along with their students, but also teaches them that these are things that when you're going through the drive-throughs, that they can make healthy choices when they're even going through drive-throughs, and that they, instead of sitting down at after dinner and sitting down and watching the news, that they can actually get up and make the news and get out and be active. So we've done a great job there, but we've been missing that staff piece. And we're very thankful and appreciative for all the work that Jennifer Iseman and her wellness team has done. To be able to work alongside of you to highlight that is part of our fit-friendly recognition programs. We presented last, last time we were in, we actually presented that recognition, which really aims to look at recognizing employers across the country, both in the educational sector and in the corporate sector, for making strides and putting in place practices that help influence a healthy culture for their employees, that includes physical activity and nutrition, with a byproduct of that being healthy employees that are, carry a lower healthcare cost, carry a higher attendance, and carry actually a higher productivity. There's some pretty nice studies that have been done that show the difference in productivity of those folks that are healthier versus those that are in an unhealthy state. So with this, I mean, this is maybe, just backing up and looking at what some of the benefits we've come to, and I kind of highlight these at a high level, but really when looking at bringing, you look at, we all know that when people move to Columbus, growing pains are sometimes hard for school districts, but the reality is, is that in my life, when I hear, when I talk to people, people want to move to Olentangie because of the schools. That's a really strong brand. When you look at healthy lifestyles and nonprofits, the American Heart Association has just as strong a brand, we hope, you know. And so by bringing those two together, we're working in a way that allows us to take the power of education and the people that are the experts in education and the people that are the experts in health for students, families, and employees, and bring those two together in a great way. We've been very, very thankful and very impressed with what we've been able to do in just a short time. And it's really helped paint the picture for what we're doing in, across the country now. You know, if you look at the way, when we started doing this, we'd work at maybe just one school in a district, or a couple of just elementaries in a district, but we've really worked with Mr. Rafe and Dr. Lucas and all of the schools to paint this model that we're sharing with other districts, where it's a partnership that involves all schools, district administrative offices, and all faculty. And it really helps us have a more comprehensive way of working with districts, and one that can both help us reach our goals to raise funds, to fund more research, but really, really, really make a difference in how people are living and the choices that they're making daily, that can help us reach that 2020 goal and save so many lives each day. I'm here, just a couple of pictures that I wanted to share with you in ways that we've worked in the district to celebrate and make it fun. You can see some photographs there, there's three teachers there that are receiving their excellence awards, both for the district recognition and their individual school recognition statewide for being number one. Staff, we are very excited that we've been able to include the staff piece. And also, picture upper right-hand corner is a picture of a couple of Olentangie High School, some braves there that are getting their redout materials out to all of their staff. And then that final picture there on the bottom, it's a picture of a young lady named Caitlin, who is one of our heart heroes for this year. I actually attached her story there for you to read at your leisure, but what we've found over the last couple of years is that Caitlin's not the only story. Everybody has a story about the impact cardiovascular disease has had on their life. And through our partnership, we're allowing these folks to have the avenue to share their story, but then also inspire others to make some change. And that's the change that I want to take a minute and highlight for you in closing. When you look at Olentangie, in just one, in five years, we've done amazing work. We've gone from working with six elementary schools to now working with all high schools, all middle schools, and majority of the elementary schools and all staff. And from that comes a lot of great things to celebrate. The one thing is, is that the number one seems, I talked about numbers at the beginning, and the number one seems to be a number that is associated very closely with Olentangie schools in many ways, and it's no different for our partnership and our organization. For the fifth straight year, Olentangie will be recognized as the number one school district for, in all of Ohio, for our partnership and our service learning programs. It reaches so many people and does such good for the local community, for the local research, and for all that we're doing in our efforts to build healthier lives. The Olentangie was also the very first school district in central Ohio to be recognized by the American Heart Association for your fit-friendly gold stats. That says something, that you're the ones that are willing to stick your neck out and do great things for your staff, but more so that you're excited to go out and get recognized for that, and show your employee base that what we're doing is recognized by the American Heart Association for healthy, as we're doing things that will provide healthy standards of living for you. It helps with your recruitment of staff, and not that there's probably a shortage of applications, but at the same time, it allows you to highlight the quality of programs that you're giving to your staff. We're also the first district in Ohio to ever top in one year, over $100,000 raised to fund cardiovascular research through your service learning programs. It's something you all should be extremely proud of. When we look at the amount that it takes to fund an individual researcher, it's about $110,000. And so right there, in one year, you've helped make that dream a reality. And the work that those researchers do is astounding, but it also forwards the work that we can do in education, raises the quality of materials that we can provide to staff. There's also some things in there about having the top redout in the state of Ohio at Liberty High School, which will be coming up, the second annual one, of which Caitlin is the honorary captain and heart hero, will be next Friday. All of the high schools will be hosting football redouts this year in September, October. So we're excited about leading the way with that. And out of all the roughly 1,400 schools that held redouts last year nationally, Liberty ranked number 15 in the entire country. So, and those students, I tell you, they, our dream was to make sure that we could go into an event and the stands would be red when they shouldn't be, and that was most definitely the case last year, that's for sure. The number of students that we reach a year and families we reach a year is astounding, and there's numbers in there, but I think the number that makes sense to me is with every one of those folks that we're reaching, they're receiving the warning signs of heart disease and stroke. And 89% of the materials that we send home get read by parents. And when you look at awareness, that makes a big difference. There are also things that we give back to the school district to help provide continual education through physical education equipment, budgetary relief, memberships to their both state and local professional organizations for continual education on a professional level. But most of all, I think the thing I'm most excited about is the opportunity to recognize and honor young ladies like Caitlin, families like the Ryan family who were honorary captains last year, and get the dialogue going about heart disease, and the fact that we can make a difference and make a change in turning the trend and building healthier lives free from heart disease and stroke. And there is not one district that doesn't better than the Olentangie Local School District. And that is, it's really, truly, very sincerely been a pleasure working with your district, everybody from the administrative office staff to the local school staff, even those families that live locally. And I just very much appreciate the time to come and speak with you. I went over what I thought, so I greatly apologize to the folks after me. But I do appreciate all the time and all the effort that you help in supporting all of the work that your staff and your families do throughout your community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do you want to make a statement?
I'll just say this, I think it's, what you're speaking to is indicative of the entire culture of the Olentangie School community, is the excellence in working together and top to bottom.
How do we get shirts? How do we get shirts?
$10.
There's a couple of ways. Couple of ways. Mike Reese is the DECA coordinator at Liberty High School. I'd say reaching out to Mike directly, or Crystal Shanahan at Orange, or you could of course just-
I'm over by Liberty and going to the game, so I didn't know if they were selling them at the game, or just got to get them before the game?
They're selling them before, they may, they're probably going to have some at the game as well, but both, and Liberty Middle School is going to be participating in it as well. Or Zep Hyatt, that's Hyatt.
It's Mike.
Yeah.
Maybe both.
So they're going to be participating as well. So either location, you can reach out.
Awesome, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next work session item is Alice Training Update, Jennifer Iseman and Deputy Lance Leonard.
Good evening.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer Iseman, I'm the HR supervisor here for the district. And one thing that we're going to talk to you tonight about is our Alice program. The safety and welfare of our students and staff is obviously one of our highest priorities. We continually review our safety plan and practice safety drills throughout the year to help our students and staff know what to do in case of an emergency. As a result of these reviews, we've been updating our guidelines and procedures regarding emergency response drills. Specifically, we've adopted new procedures that we, as well as our local sheriff's department and the Office of Homeland Security, believe are more effective in the unlikely event that there's an armed intruder in one of our buildings. The program is called Alice. Over the summer, we trained over 500 teaching, non-teaching staff, including bus drivers, food service workers, custodians, maintenance workers, all the administrators, and the central office staff. We will continue this training at the building level, at each individual building throughout the school year. In the upcoming months, our school resource officers, in cooperation with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office, will be providing the Alice training to our teachers and the building staff. We hope to have all the staff members trained by the end of the school year. Deputy Lance Leonard will talk to you a little bit about Alice, specifically what it is. I know that we've talked to you about it a couple of times before, and fill you in a little bit about specifically what's different between our previous procedures and the procedures that we're going to do now.
Good evening, I'm Deputy Lance Leonard, I'm one of the resource officers assigned here at Olentangie. I'm actually assigned over at Olentangie High School and here at Shanahan Middle School. Alice is actually an acronym, it stands for Alert Lockdown Inform Counter and Evacuate. It's actually an enhancement to a current lockdown that we actually already have in place, which really, it gives more options to teachers and staff members and to students. Alert stands, is the A, it's a clear concise language that we use. Currently, when we go into a lockdown, there's an alert, and they would come over the PA and announce lockdown, and the staff and students would know if they're going to lockdown. What we want to do with, through Alice, is give an alert and add additional information to that. You know, if they're in the front office, say, you know, lockdown, intruder in the front office. That way, staff and students would know if there is an intruder in the front office, then their option might be to evacuate the building. The more information that they can get out in that initial alert, definitely would allow students and staff to make better decisions based on the information that they get. The lockdown, what we do now, all the doors will be locked, the students all go into a corner of the room, lights off, blinds closed, windows on the doors if they're applicable would be covered, and they would stay in and wait for help or wait for the lockdown to be lifted. Past that lockdown is where Alice kind of takes over and it gives more options where we go into more information. If possible, somebody possibly over the PA would continue announcements, you know, intruder initially in the front office, now they're, if they were in elementary school, now they're in the red part of the building. That way, people would know, well, if I'm in green or yellow or blue, I can evacuate, or they can make better decisions based on what information that they have. And I know, it's not always going to be possible for that to happen, I know a lot of the schools have talked about, well, how are we going to continually get that information out? And I know a lot of the schools are working on computers, having some of the video systems on their computers, having a telephone that would be able to make an announcement and have sort of like a safe room, and that's something that they're looking at. Counter will be the next one, and that's where we apply skills to distract the intruder. Somebody were to come in this room right now, and we all started throwing things at that person, it's going to be very, very difficult for them to be able to concentrate on what they're doing. So counter is really distractions, and we've already talked about, you know, little kids, they're good at three things that Alice incorporates would be running, throwing things, and screaming. All three of those things are going to distract that person from their ultimate goal, which is to hurt people. And giving those types of options to kids and staff definitely would be an enhancement. And then third, or the last, the E is evacuate, and that's if, if possible, they would leave the premises, evacuate the building, and get to safety. And that's probably the best option, in my opinion, if they can get away from, away from the danger, out of the building. I know a lot of people say, well, you know, how do you regain control? We already have established rally points for each school that staff, staff members would know that they are to go to those types of places. And in law enforcement, it would be another area that we would have to secure too, but rally points are a big part of that. So it's going to be a little bit different. Now they're told to stay in the classrooms and lock the door, sit in the corner. Alice will provide additional options and make better decisions in those moments. The people who are not in immediate danger would be able to evacuate the building, get away, and get to safety. If they're not able to evacuate, then, and the person, the staff member knows that the danger's immediate, we would have them barricade the door, and we would teach that as well. Desks, tables, there's lots of bookshelves, there's lots of things that can be used to barricade a door. Their goal in that situation would be to make that door a stronghold, to make that room a stronghold, and nobody would be able to get through. And just in trainings that we've done, it's amazing, but just a little bit of furniture can do to a door to keep somebody from getting into it. So again, more options. And in the event that they are able to breach a door, they do get into the room, that's where the counter measures will come into effect, the screaming, the running, the throwing, and evacuating if they possibly can. And again, there's no, obviously we can't guarantee if there is an active killer, or active shooter, or intruder into a building, that everybody's going to be 100% safe, but we definitely believe that these options are the best way to keep people as safe as possible. And obviously, children are number one priority, keeping them safe, and any options that we can give them and the staff members to make better decisions, we feel is the best way to go. So, any questions that you had about Alice?
So is Alice, in essence, becoming kind of the new standard for classroom training or educational?
I believe that it is. Just here in Delaware County, Big Walnut recently is going to Alice, they've been doing training. Buckeye Valley is going through training. We've already had training here. Delaware City already has Alice implemented, and lots of service schools around Columbus, and really all over the nation are going to an enhanced lockdown procedure.
I saw an article the other day about bulletproof whiteboards and things like that. I mean, is there talk from a police standpoint of other things that, like that? I mean, that's a very creative marketing thing, but of other things like special locks for doors, or are there things like that that districts are considering, or?
There's always different security options, and going through the training, it was a big part of what we talked about, well, let's get stronger doors, let's get metal detectors and all those types of things. But at the end of the day, at least in my opinion and the opinion of the people that taught us, those are all things that would keep somebody, a regular, normal, average citizen who doesn't want to hurt people or do things, but if there's somebody that comes into the building and they want to hurt people and kill people and they have a gun, a metal detector's not going to stop them. Certain locks might be able to stop those types of things. You know, bulletproof boards or bulletproof glass might stop somebody or deter somebody, but at the end of the day, we feel like giving people options is really the best way to go. It's more of a people, people problem, people issue versus- It's more of a people, people problem, people issue versus, you know, more cameras and more metal detectors and things like that.
We had the facilities consultant that was looking at cameras, et cetera. Not necessarily these kinds of things, but an overview of the building. What's the, what's the status of that conversation with that consulting firm?
We just talked about the Development Committee.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah, we went, we're installing that now. Where the, in the Sheriff's Department will be able to have on their laptops.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're working with Mike's schools. They're working with Mike Testa.
The group that presented here, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah, they presented here.
Yep, we're about 75% done with downloading the floor plans into that program.
That's great.
Which will be up and running very soon.
That's great.
And Mike Testa's group's doing a review of the technology and what's at each school. We talked about that at Development Committee last night.
Time is great.
Any other questions or comments for Jennifer or Deputy Leonard?
Thanks for keeping the kids safe.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Transportation Update, Jody Clark from Transportation Department.
Hi.
Welcome, Jody.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to share with you.
Sure.
Just wanted to share a little bit about where we started, where we are now, and some of where we're going. Just very, very recently this year, we hired a new West Compound Supervisor, Amy Morgan. Amy Morgan came from us, from Marysville Local School District. She was, uh-oh. She was a director there, so she comes very highly qualified and is doing a wonderful job. We appreciate having her here. Also, have a new Secretary for Field Trips, Lori Fox. They're both housed out of our West Compound. So we welcome them and thank you for, for those. Give you a little bit of history. In 2011, I came, I've been here since September 27th, actually, of 2011. So going on two years. We had 137 routes at that time. 2012, 13th school year, we moved up to 142 routes. And this year, we have currently 141. Actual student counts and data will be done on October, the first full week of October this year. We are experiencing some increased ridership. So we'll be sharing those numbers through our T1 report and the stating as of November 1st, as are due. The reduction of the one route came from absorbing like a vacated route due to retirements or resignations from our driver. And we were able to absorb that and become just a little bit more efficient there. Our annual inspections that we have every year with the State Highway Patrol were nearly about 98% passed on the first round of inspections. If we're speaking of, what is that 2% that you're, you're wondering about? Some of that's due to the age of the fleet. And I wanna thank you for the opportunity for the Bus Replacement Plan, because that helps us succeed in having that 98% become 100%. That just moves us closer to that. And that 98% is both for the West and the East Compound combined. Our goal this year for transportation was to be the best of the best. We work in an excellent school district. I am pleased with the entire transportation staff. They've done a really great job by the short turnaround we had this year. We worked a lot of long hours. Our work became, you know, started before June 4th. But when June 5th hit, or June 8th hit, when all of our non-publics were out, we, we hit the, hit the routing and, and started working very hard to get our routes up for bid and get them ready for the drivers on July 30th and the 31st. So we did a pretty good turnaround there, and I'm just really proud of everybody's hard work and teamwork that it took to get there. The result of that was a smooth start with students. I'm hearing very positive results from that. And again, I owe that to the transportation staff, they, they did a great job. Again, thank you for the purchase of the nine new buses. We bought those in May. Those actually replaced some of the older models, so that'll help us move forward. And our goal is, is to have a perfect inspection next year, so we'll work toward that. We're proud of our drivers. The first day, it's really unheard of in a lot of districts that everybody's home off the road by 5:05, 5:10. Most are looking at 6 o'clock, some, some other districts may be looking later at that, if you've heard in the news. So, we're proud of that. Our drivers do a fantastic job in keeping our children safe. They're some of the best drivers that I've ever been associated with. So we're proud to have them. Last year at this time, I shared with you about a lighting study that we were involved in. Just to let you know that we did have an outcome on that. We had two buses that had an additional LED lighting system installed. And what we did was put those on two buses in the district on our busy roads. And they did pause, they did come out with positive results for the red light violations. That is a motorist who would run the red lights when a bus is picking up children. We had nearly success. It took, took the folks a little, little bit to understand what those lights were, but once they, they seen those, they were at eye level. I think we got positive results out of that. And we'll be looking at those as we purchase new buses, to see if that's something the district wants to move forward. Some of the challenges, obviously, are the road closures. We talked about that again last year. Well, we have several of those. The first one was Orange and Carriage, where the roundabout, that is completed now. We kinda planned routes around it and 315, where they're adding lanes. We're gonna be cutting out the embankment and adding some turn lanes to 315 and Powell Road Intersection. As of Monday, I believe they're going to close that north and southbound. So we're gonna be able to go east and westbound. So you can imagine some of our challenges coming through the retreat at Sherborn. Takes a little time to do that, so we're having, you know, some timing things that we're looking at and we're working through those. The newest one that kinda came out in the news that you may be aware of is 23 and 270. It was our understanding that that was gonna be kinda held off, and I think it gave us a little surprise. So they're going to reduce 23 down to one lane. So if you're thinking of coming from the Worthington area, or coming from the Oland TNG District to the Worthington area, going 23 might not be a great idea. So one lane traffic on each, going each direction. So that'll present some challenges to one of our non-public schools. And I actually had conversations with Sister Mary Michael at St., St. Michael's today, and we're gonna work through those together. So, those are some of the things. Let's see, we have one regular route to fill, and we should have those filled very shortly. I would like to just point out that Mike Miller and Jen Eisman have done a fabulous job, outstanding job of interviewing applicants. And then our trainers, our OBIs, have gotten them trained to fill those positions, and they've done a great job. In closing, just a little bit of data that I thought you might be interested. Our, our district last year accommodated about 3,500 extra for field trips. So if you have 141 drivers, 3,500 trips, in a 186-day timeframe is, is pretty tremendous. We traveled about 126,000, 127,000 miles in doing that. So, the drivers do a great job at that, and that's above and beyond the 10,000 miles we traveled either. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. How many routes do we have that service the non-public schools? You have St. Michael's.
Let's see, we have about eight buses at St. Michael's. We have nine that go down in the morning and eight that, that do the afternoon. And then we also service St. Paul's. We have about four in the morning and four in the afternoon at St. Paul's.
Do we do any to St. Mary, Delaware?
We have some St. Mary's. Those, those children come in on our high school routes and are shuttled to St. Mary's that way. And then we also service St. Bridget in Dublin, on the west side of the district. And St. Andrews in Wellington are two of our other schools that we service.
Are we still doing the sharing, like where we share with Worthington and Westerville? I remember that, I don't know if that was a couple of years ago, but-
Currently, we team up with Worthington right now. We, we do service Oakstone Academy, and we need a Worthington bus, and there's a transfer involved that they help facilitate those kiddos to school.
Have you had any challenges kind of recruiting and retaining your drivers? I mean, there's a lot of publicity of a very large district in the area that was short drivers.
Yeah, well, you know, it's always a challenge for every district. But honestly, I think that, you know, Oland TNG has a district that people want to come to. I myself, you know, love being in the district, and I think that our positive attitude from our department overflow, overflows into that. And so I'm always networking and asking the drivers to network and say, hey, you know, somebody that is interested. And we've had, we've had a tremendous amount of applicants. And I think Jen Eisman and Sheila can attest, you know, to the amount of applicants that, that we have interviewed and pulled through. So I think that we're doing fairly well there.
My girl's a lovely bus driver.
That's good. That's one of my favorite parts of Convocation, was being there and seeing the bus drivers with the schools that they support. And I talked to a couple of them during the, the trade show stuff. And they were just so excited for school to start and to see their roots. And they just had the best attitudes. And I, I can honestly say, I don't, I don't know the positive attitude I could have driving kids to school every day. I don't even like to do it in my car, let alone everyone else's kids. But they, they just were genuinely excited about the school year starting. And to see someone that excited about their job, when it's a job that I, I think would be difficult and test your patience, is exciting.
Great people.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was very helpful, very informative. Okay, the last items is State Report Card Update, Mr. Rafe and Mr. Fettie. Tag Team here?
Tag Team, I heard. He gets to talk about them, always open details.
He can do the introduction, I'm Mr. Darnold.
I did find like this version of it out of the BOE webpage, which goes, it's 14 pages long, and it goes indicator by indicator, it's really helpful. That's the summary page, yes. That's a whole, tells which, which items are currently being graded and which ones will be assessed. It was actually really helpful.
Alright, we'll just go to the next slide, Patrick, please. My, here, keep this on the side. Okay, well, the purpose, good evening and thank you for having us. The purpose of our presentation tonight is to begin to explain our new State Report Card. And as you know, the new State Report Card has nine letter grades, and those letter grades are replacing what used to be one overall designation. So the old Report Card System had, gave us a one designation. Currently, as we implement the new reporting system, we have nine separate letter grades coming in 2015. So we'll, we'll have this, this picture for the next, this year and the following year. But in 2015, the fall of 2015, we will receive one overall letter grade. So that's still to come. What we decided to do with this, because there's so much information related to the State Report Card and all the, all the different measures that we use, we asked Dr. Lucas for the ability to break this up for you. So it's hopefully more, a little bit easier to digest all this information, and we can be a little bit more specific. So tonight, we're gonna start, Mr. Fettie's gonna walk us through a district-level presentation that gives us an overview of our district progress on the new, the nine new measures. Subsequently, we'll go building by building, and we've broken up those building-level presentations into two presentations that will cover the achievement portion, which is the indicators related to our performance index, and the building progress data, which is, are the value-added measures. And then the third presentation will cover gap closing, which is the old AYP, which is now called Annual Measurable Objectives, and the graduation rate data. We will culminate that with our Annual Report of Academic Achievement. And at that time, we'll highlight all of the measures. As you're familiar with, our Annual Report of Academic Achievement goes well beyond what the state expects. The State Report Card is simply one reporting measure that we use. As you know, through our continuous improvement process, we have multiple academic benchmarks that we measure ourselves against. So, so we're looking forward to that. We feel, just like transportation, and Jen Eisman reported with safety training, academically, we feel we had a great year in 2012, 2013, and we're looking forward to, to a great year in 2013, 14. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fettie, so he can go through the specific measures.
And if I could, so the presentation kinda one through four?
Yes.
For separate meetings, are these tonight?
No, Presentation 1 is tonight.
Tonight, two, three, four, later?
Business meeting, Presentation 2, September.
So it'll be the end of this, uh, beginning of next month?
This month.
End of this month.
This month. October work session will be Presentation 3, and then business meeting end of October.
And that's, and that, end of October is the big book?
Correct.
Great. Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, so you have the overview page, and as Mr. O'Brien indicated, there's actually 14 pages that you can find online. I believe the website is reportcard ohio.gov, and you can search by district there. The first letter grade that we received, working across that page, is the, are the achievement ratings. And the first of those is for standards met, or indicators met. And that's not necessarily a new measure, the letter grade is simply new here. And this indicator tells us how many students have passed the state test at a minimum level, at proficiency or grade. The state benchmark for that is, is and has been 75% since the invention of the OAAs and OTT. Next year, or this school year, that, that benchmark will move up to 80%. So at each grade level, at each test, students will, 80% or more of students will need to be proficient or higher to meet that indicator. And if you, if you were to go through all of our grade levels right now at a district level, all of our grade levels are also above 80% as well already. And as you can see, as we move through the slides, you'll see our comparison against the 610 districts that were reported in the state in each of these measures. The other measure in, in achievement is the Performance Index. And again, that is not a new calculation, but the letter grade is new. Our Performance Index is 107.5, 32nd highest in the state, highest we've had as a district in history. And that rating is a B, in order to earn a A or higher, 108, as we've talked about many times, is the benchmark here. But Performance Index measures the test results of every student, not just whether they're proficient, but how well they did on each test. And the better students do, the higher your Performance Index goes. And that scale tops out at 120. And that's not a percentage measure, it's a, it's a, it's a scale of 0 through 120, and ours is a 107.5.
We actually found out that you can get a 107.9 and get an A.
Right, there's some rounding, the state actually rounds out-
Let's work through 108. Let's just be safe.
There were some districts that Report Card read 107.
We want 108. We don't want- Any argument? Nothing.
But, you know, this is also a good lesson in how many measures are actually on this Report Card. You know, as a district, we had five, six As and three Bs overall. The top PI in the state was 112, I believe that was Madera City. They had four As, two Bs, and two Cs. So any one measure is simply one measure, not one measure tells the story. And that's why at our fourth presentation, we'll, we'll present the Annual Report on Academic Achievement, which we feel takes an all-encompassing look at- which we feel takes an all encompassing look at all the data we can collect from every angle possible. So then the next category on the report card is progress. And this is still called value added, but for report card purposes, we're calling it progress. But this is no different than the value added calculations that we've seen in the past in terms of the concept. What's new this year in addition to the letter grades is value added ratings for each of the three subgroups you see listed up there underneath overall. The overall is all four through eight grade students in reading and math in their progress. Because we have three years of data in that category, our grade reflects a three-year composite. Next year for, for each of the subgroups, this year it's just a one-year score. Next year it'll be a two-year composite. The following year in those areas, it will be a three-year composite as well. Whereas the overall grade will continue to be a three-year composite moving forward through three most recent years. The purpose of the composite is the way the value added model works is the greater your N size, the greater number of scores you're putting into the formula, the more accurate the calculation becomes according to Evas Sass, who does the calculations for the tell. As you can see, our overall rating was an A. 281 districts in the state earned an A. And gifted, these are students who are identified gifted in reading, identified gifted in math and/or identified gifted in superior cognitive ability. There's other areas that students can be identified gifted in, but this rating reflects those three. We have over 7,000 students identified in those areas. We're the largest gifted population in the state of Ohio. Just like any other state, we're not able to serve every one of our gifted identified students directly on a daily basis. But our gifted score was a B and we ranked 139, or excuse me, we didn't rank. The 139 districts earned an A or a B in gifted calculation this year. Students in the lowest 20% of achievement, oh, excuse me, I should, students with disabilities is exactly what it says. Our students with disabilities earned an A. 97 of 610 districts earned that grade. And then the students in the lowest 20% is a new concept. We did, we did not know who those students were until after the test was given. They take the scores of all the students in reading and they line them up across the state. And they find the 20 lowest percent of scores in, in reading and they do the same thing in math. So it's a little confusing and it's not the lowest 20% of students in the state, but the lowest 20% of scores. And there's only a certain number of scores possible on each test. So of the students who scored within that lowest quintile of possible scores, they then calculate value added for those subgroups in reading and in math. And then as a composite, just like they do for the other subgroups as well. And our composite was an A for that, for those, that subgroup that was.
So I guess this was the set of grades that kind of surprised me. In that, sort of my ingo assumption was we would have scored better in gifted and maybe had more challenges in the disabilities and lowest 20%. Since we've, we've discussed CIP, we always want to make sure that we're educating everybody. So this kind of, my ingo assumption was we would have come out the other way in this. So I was pleased to see that disabilities and lowest 20% was really good scores. It was a surprise to see the lower scoring gifted.
Right. And again, a couple anomalies that you want, you might want to note as you look at these. There are, when you talk about gifted and students with disabilities, we do have a subgroup of students that are known as twice exceptional, gifted students who also have disabilities who fall in both of those categories. There are students in the lowest 20% who are also identified as gifted. Gifted, once you're, once you're identified as gifted, you're never not gifted from that point forward. And you start identifying gifted students as early as the second grade. So there's, there's all sorts of factors that go into these. But students can cross these subgroups in many different ways.
And I do, and we debate continually the, some, with regard to growing, progressing gifted students to that A level where they need twice as, it's just more difficult. There's some debate about whether or not there's enough stretch in the test to truly get so many of them to, especially with the number that we have, to that A range. Although some of the individual buildings do. And that's one of those things that we examine as we look at designing interventions, enriching opportunities. The difficulty with the lowest 20% is Jack indicated, we don't know who they are. And we know who they were. So for this year, we have them identified and are working with them to make sure that we're addressing their growth. But then when they take the next year, test the next year, they may not score in the lowest 20%. So they may not be the students that we were targeting.
And it also depends on how difficult each test turns out to be each year. For instance, I believe it was fourth grade math was a test that was not as difficult as fifth grade math. So the subgroup of students in fifth grade math fell within all below proficient score range. Whereas the students in the lowest 20% in fourth grade math, some of those students actually scored proficient. It still fell within the subgroup of the lowest 20% because the scores across the state were so high and across the district were so high. So that's, that's the newest measure that we're just continuing to learn about. The other thing with value added is, this is the one, this is the measure on the new report card that I think is most confusing for the public. Because when you see a C, especially in Oland TNG, you find, oh, that's not going to be good enough if you're going to see a C in this range. But C for value added purposes means met a year's worth of growth. The way they calculate value added, from a negative one to a point nine in that composite rating is a met year's growth. Zero is met. So a, a building or a district could come in a negative point nine and that would be a C, but they would have met growth. So it's just, it's a very confusing scale, I think. It's hard to explain. Any questions on progress?
And we were, we were prepared to, and we were, obviously, we're going to continue to say our goal is always in every building and as a district on every measure. And that's what we're working towards. And when the new measures were coming out, anticipating based on what we ran from our simulated data from the year before, we anticipated we might have a C in some of the progress measures. So we were preparing to message why the C would have, would have or could have been acceptable. But then when they came out that we didn't have any Cs, we decided to highlight that other districts did have Cs.
I think it's, you know, looking at the 14-page document, the sixth grade, seventh grade reading kind of shows a red on that matrix. Anything particular there?
Are you on page six?
Seven or 14?
Seven, sorry. What's the question about it? Is it simply why or?
Anything you can add to your observations on maybe why the fifth grade being, I would argue, so green, you know, 12.2? And then to have a significant drop in sixth and seventh and then back to green and eighth?
I can tell you that we haven't seen a, a long trend like that in those areas. And we're waiting, the, the rest of the value added data should be out the week of September 30th. So I'd really like to reserve any comment on that until I have all the data in front of me.
The other thing that we had seen since I've been on the board, and I actually, Eric Gordon and I, before Mark was here, when Mark was still at Liberty, Eric and Gordon and I were looking at it. And then the state of New York even looked at it because they would, they would see these students progress very well in the elementary school. And then at sixth grade, they would see a drop. But then at high school, they would come back again. And a lot of it was accredited to, through the study that New York State did, was the, the change in the student at that, that time. And so the state of New York looked at revamping their entire grade levels. And so some schools went back to K through eight and took out that middle school. You know, some then dropped down to K through four and really targeted then on that middle school age. But Eric, because Eric Gordon and I were seeing that same trend in the, in the middle school levels. You know, of course, different tests at the time, but we were seeing that drop at the middle school level. And a lot of it could be associated with those students are going through a lot of, of personal change at that, that time. But then you would see, you would be concerned if you never saw those scores coming back up. But then we see them coming back up. So it, it just tells us that, that those middle school years are so important, you know, in education.
Well, we also did, I mean, we did adopt a new, new curriculum in, in reading and math, or language arts and math this year implemented a new curriculum. The test alignment with the new curriculum was not, was not strong this year. It was still aligned to, to a lot of the standards. So we were very pleased with these results based on that implementation. The alignment, we're being told the alignment will be stronger next year.
Not perfect.
And that's still not perfect. And it won't be until 14, 15. 14, 15, then there'll be complete alignment with the new standards.
The other thing, you know, as we transition with this next slide is when we look at gifted and a B in 139 districts earned an A or a B, only 62 earned an A in gifted across the state. And then when we look at, I'm sorry, the students with disabilities, there were own, or excuse me, the next slide is paralympial measurable objectives where we got a B. There were only 28 As across the state in AMOs. So these are, we are seeing, and that's why the state is withholding or waiting two years before they add overall district grades because they have to decide which of these grades should be weighted more heavily. So whereas right now, we look at these Bs and think we do want those to be As, certainly we do. We are seeing that those are more difficult measures than some of the other measures as well. But AMOs is the new gap, is gap closing, is the new annual, or adequate yearly progress. AYP is a federal requirement through NCLB.
Which is, yeah, because people listening don't know, no child left behind.
No child left behind, correct. And Ohio wrote a waiver for no child left behind this year to change some of the requirements. And in that waiver, they changed adequate yearly progress to annual measurable objectives. Our score there was a B, but this measure is, is making sure that every student is succeeding regardless of income, race, culture or disability. So this is, this measure breaks our students up into subgroups based on those characteristics, sets a goal. The goal in reading this year is 83.4% proficiency. So before, when we said for a grade level to meet an, an indicator, they had to be 75% proficient. This goal says for a subgroup to be, to meet their indicator, they have to be 83.4% proficient in reading and 78.5% proficient in math. So again, a higher standard and more difficult, heavier weight, I would say, on the AMOs. And our, this, this is calculated down to the percentage. And our percentage of AMOs was 89% and 90% would have been an A. So when we say only 28 As in the state in this category, we were 1% away in that regard.
Jack, can I, can I take you back to that gifted piece again? With the B, and you said a C was meeting a year's worth of growth. And, and as it says on the report card, did the students get a year's worth of growth? Did they get more? Did they get less? So what is the difference between a B and an A?
So a B is a positive one. We said zero is the target. And a C is a negative nine, negative point nine to a positive one. The B is from that positive one to a positive two. And an A is above a positive two. So we were within the range of positive one to positive two.
So the B is saying that we made more than one year's worth of growth, but we didn't make enough to get an A?
Correct. The last measures on the report card are graduation rates. They calculate now a four-year and a five-year graduation rate. The U.S.A. rates listed there, 64th in the state in four-year graduation rate, 38th in the state in a five-year rate. And one of the things we, with these new calculations and these new graduation rates is that, you know, we've always strived to graduate every single student. And just because we're putting a, a letter grade on it now is not going to change that at all. And we, you know, we've always done a really great job in this area. And our high schools are very attuned, you know, as at Oasis today, looking at some of their programs that they're developing down there, some new ideas that they have. And I'm just, I'm really proud of these statistics. So the other thing that's on this new report card, the other things I should say are these non-graded items that they're reporting across the state. Attendance, 95.9% was our attendance rate last year. And then all the rest of the bullets that I'm going to read are for our graduates in the class of 2012. All the, all of these data is referred to the graduates of the class of 12. So you'll remember in our annual report, we reported composite ACT score for juniors and seniors. This is a mean ACT score of students who graduated in 2012. And our mean ACT score average is 25, the sixth highest in the state. Our ACT participation rate of that class was 85%. SAT is clearly not as popular across the state. I think we're all aware. Our average score of those, 11.58, and our participation rate was just under 30%. We also are reported on the number of students who take an AP test. And that's 1,005, or a number of tests taken, actually, that should be read as 1,524, second in the state. We, we missed first in that category by seven.
That's the number of took the test.
That is the number of tests, I'm sure. And then.
Is it juniors and seniors?
No, sophomores.
Okay, so then that data is not for just the graduates.
That one's not just for.
That would still be all of the senior class and half the junior class that have taken one?
Yeah.
Yeah, but like my daughter took five a year.
Yeah.
But this is the number of students taking it, not the number of tests taken.
Yeah, the number of tests taken with this, it's probably pushing 3,500.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Because I know, I know there'd be, even four years ago, there'd be, we gave 1,400 tests.
Right.
So.
So this is the number of students.
Number of students who took an AP test.
Any junior and senior?
Yeah, and sophomores, like sophomore.
And then last, the percentage of those tests with a three or higher was 77.4%.
Which is, I guess, a significant statistic for us here is that the number one ranked school in the state, district in the state only had a passing percentage or a three or higher percentage of, what'd you say, a 60?
Yeah, 67.7.
It was 10, 10 points lower. And they only gave seven more tests than we did.
But, but our passage rate was better, much better?
Yeah.
That's correct.
And then the highest passage rate in the state was, was a school of 100 students. So then, one of the things that we wanted to share with you at, at a district level, and this is going to feed into the next presentations of what happens at the building level to address building level grades, is we create continuous improvement plans or what we're calling an academic action plan for continuous improvement. We know our CIP to be our benchmarks that guide our annual report and those are really measures. But the goals that we're working towards as an academics team are to earn the highest possible ratings by September of 2016, if not earlier, so straight As, and create annual strategies to get us to that point. And to develop each student as a college and career-ready individual demonstrated by those students earning college credit or completing some kind of a career development program prior to graduation. You know, that's our mindset as an academics team. We want every kid to get college credit, have a high-quality work experience. And we want our district to have straight As. And all the work that we do is going to work towards those things. So then our strategy to do that this year, yes?
Before you get off. How did you land on September of 2016?
Well, as we look at the new tests being implemented in 14, 15, the new curriculum finally being implemented fully this year, we felt that was an attainable goal, hoping that obviously hit it earlier. But looking at all the factors with the state's new evaluation system changes, the new ThinkGate is a, is an assessment database that we're hoping to create. And when we go to the next slide, these common assessments that'll drive this improvement. We have to wait for all of these things to kind of, we're, we're waiting for those to fall into place in terms of this timeline. Not that we're waiting for the work to begin now, but that's how we chose that.
I get a sense, is there enough steps there?
And what we did, what we did is as we went through this, I guess it was a changed planning process because we had previously been doing it almost on a year-to-year basis. And because we still have the CIP and the CIP benchmarks that we measure ourselves against. So, so those are, I mean, because this, in this regard, this is only reflective of our goals towards the state report card and the state reports. We still have the annual report of academic achievement and all the other different benchmarks that we do on a, a year-to-year basis. But this action plan is, is really, especially with regard to goal one, is designed to address the specifics about the state report card and implementing that new state report card system under the current constraints of, you know, under the current model.
But I guess next year's CIP will be more reflective of the new state. But I guess next year's CIP will be more reflective of the new state report card, right?
Correct.
So they're going to start to come together.
At some point, yeah.
Probably in 15, because the majority of these measures will be out in 15.
And, and that's the other point I want to make this for Brian, is when you look at this, uh, cover page of everything coming in 2015, there are things about, there's much about this that we still don't know. So that gives us that one last year to learn how these ratings are going to be. Cause like when we talk about that lowest 20%, there was no information about that until the grade was available. So we felt 2016 was, that's the, that's the next year after all the grades are out.
Or knowing how they, knowing how they weigh together, knowing how they're going to determine the overall, overall rank, uh, grade, uh, level designation, um, and they blend all those measures together, there's just, there's a lot of unknowns to it. And this is, and I, and I would say from our, from the standpoint of us, an internal working, working document that then we filter down to the buildings so that, um, they, you know, I guess it's from more of a long-range finding perspective, uh, what we're asking the buildings to do is they design their individual building continuous improvement. We're, we're, we're essentially though, we're saying to them, if these are our goals, yours should be very similar.
So then, um, in, in our plan, we identify some strategies that we're going to accomplish this year as an academics team. One of which is developing curriculum blueprints with cornerstone tasks, fancy way of saying, uh, curriculum maps and common assessments. One of, you know, research shows, you know, a guaranteed viable curriculum is required if you're going to meet all your goals, you know. Here's coherent curriculums, know that when you walk into a, a second grade classroom in any of our 15 elementary schools, the same important skills are being learned in each of those classes. With the new curriculum onboard now, new learning standards, we have to make sure that all of our, uh, curriculum is revised correctly. The next thing we're going to do is align our, our new teacher evaluation system, which is a comprehensive, uh, valuation growth model for teachers with our all tangy foundations of curriculum instruction and assessment. So that as principals evaluate teachers, they're identifying areas of need, have they have resources to help teachers address those areas of need? And that if teachers use those resources effectively, they'll see the results in their classroom, see the results at the building level, see the results at the district level. So that's, that has a lot to do with our professional development program. Third bullet is to identify flexible learning options at the secondary level. That's talking about dual enrollment, college credit access, um, real wor, real world work experiences. So we want to know, you know, by the end of this year, what our programs are. We had a faculty committee, committee meeting last night talking a little bit more about that. And then lastly, we're going to adopt a K8 universal screener. Um, the people services department had an RTI audit last year. And this is a major finding of that audit and a universal screener is directly aimed at, um, identifying unique needs of learners to close achievement gaps and to grow students to those areas of, of the report card. So we're very confident that, that we have a plan in place that's going to, um, get us to the point of having all As on the report card, um, and get us to the point that we're really, well, we already know we're the best district in the state, but it's not, or any ones.
Help me understand a universal screener, is that, so every year, every kid will take a similar test?
Uh, yeah, a quick test. It's, it's not, it's not like a standardized two-hour test, a screener. Um, what these are, are locally administered, scientifically researched assessments, um, directed at different, different, different cognitive skills, whether in reading and in math, um, that helps students or help teachers understand exactly, you know, if a student might be, you know, almost proficient in reading or just above proficient in reading, what is the skill that they need to develop to grow more? It's not just reading, but there's, there's actual, you know, scientific strategies to teaching different components of reading and helps to identify those causes and those needs of each student. Any other questions?
Oh, we talked a lot about, well, at the state level, they talked a lot about, you know, the reading and math scores. Will they ever incorporate science or social studies?
In 2014, 15, we believe that science tests are going to come back at the OAA level at fifth grade and eighth grade. And social studies tests are supposed to come back in fourth grade and seventh grade. And then at the high school level, they're supposed to incorporate end of course exams and a plethora of courses at the high school, I think. I'm not sure.
Yeah, they're trying to weed out which ones.
Yeah, there should be like three math courses, three English courses and at least two science and two social studies end of course exams. Uh, we just learned this week that we'll be piloting some of those exams this spring. So we're working through that right now. Again, those are those online assessments. So we'll see how ready we really are for all of those. But they should be coming back. I, I think the question that remains is, is the state funding there to actually create those or buy those or provide those?
That's the only reason I don't want to, like, respond to that.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, just, I, there were some great explanations there, which I really appreciate from some of the specificity of your bullets.
So we'll be back at the next meeting to talk more about some building of data for the same, same areas. If you have questions before then, feel free to bump them along those.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the work session items. We now accept the motion to go into executive session to, uh, consider the employment compensation of a public employee.
He employees. Some of.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, just going to roll? But we will, I'm sorry, we will not be taking any action when we return, so we're just going to, we'll come back and adjourn.
Mrs. Excudon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Thank you.